Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is September 23rd, 2020. And the phone number, if you'd like to join in and listen, is 360-252-9020. And your PIN is 1234. The topic of this work session is, it's information only, and it's the WIRE, the Watershed Plans Update. And we have all myself, John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, representing Commissioner, Vice Chair Commissioner Menter is Thomasina Cooper. And we have Commissioner Gary Edwards in the House, County Manager Ramiro Chavez. And we've got the, trying to think of a nice metaphor, not metaphor, but an adjective. But we have Jennifer Davis in the House. Fantastic worker. So, and who do you have with you, Jennifer?
Caitlin Nelson, the planner.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else? I don't see anybody else. So, go ahead, Ramiro.
No, this, you had a briefing on this matter on September 16th. And it was only 30 minutes. And I believe they ran out of time on some of the questions perhaps the board had. So here we are, just to make sure that you have all your questions answered. And Caitlin is going to walk us through again on the schedule, if you don't mind, and what is coming up, and what will be the upcoming decisions the board may be seeing in the near future.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Sure. Well, we're actually going off a bit into a different plan, just following up on the Shahel. This is going to be more of an introduction to topics of the Deschutes Plan. Are you prepared for that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Because that's the one that's coming up, right? Because a timeline coming up?
Yes. The Shahel Plan will have another for you to review in the next month. And you will have another briefing at the end of October on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we are going to go over some conversations that have been happening with the Deschutes Raya Planning Unit. Before getting into the chapters of the Deschutes Plan, like we did for Shahelis, one component of the Deschutes Plan that's different is the addition of policies and adaptive management. This is an optional component of the plan, but it has been unanimously agreed upon by members of the planning as being a necessary component to improve stream flow in this basin. It is a list of different types of methods that can be used, including recommended changes for potential studies that organizations may conduct, or a variety of other potential methods to reduce the impacts to our streams. We're starting today with the more complex methods, and we'll come back another time to the remaining items. And I'd like to talk to these one at a time. And if we don't get to one, we'll roll it into another briefing. You can see the Deschutes Watershed as the section in the middle, with the majority of it located in Thurston County. There is a small amount that extends into Lewis, but it is only forest land, so there's no projected growth there. The current goal for the draft is to be completed in December, so you'll be receiving a full copy of that draft further down the line. The item to consider is the formation of a Deschutes Watershed Council. Unlike the Shahelis Plan, which has been working together for years, the Deschutes Watershed doesn't have that kind of existing. So the current proposal would involve creating a part between Deschutes Estuary Team, the local governments, and the other involved organizations. The group could request funding from legislature for grants or work out a method for members to contribute further down the line. It could also include working on tasks outside of the permanent exempt wells, like MDL studies. And so for this item, I'm just looking for input on whether or not there's any concerns with this kind of proposal, or if you're on board with having this kind of a group formed. Any comments?
I do have a question on the funding. You have legislature, meaning legislative action, that can provide some funding to implement the plan, obviously the grants. What do you mean with the members?
One thing that has been thrown around is senior local agreement. It's something that could always put as in the future, after plan adoption, to negotiate with members of the planning units to get this kind of a group funded.
But the proposed plan itself does not bind the county financially at this point, right?
Right.
Okay.
You're looking to form this group?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, go ahead, let's hear more about it.
Well, that's it at this point. It's very conceptual. It was proposed by DIRT, by Deschutes Estuary Restoration Team. And they just want input on whether or not we would support this kind of proposal to look into.
Do you have a question? Well, yes. I guess the main thing I would ask is, and how do we pay for it? But you're talking about, if there's a funding plan, I take it. But who's kind of footing the bill? That's the bottom line for me.
We don't have to decide at this point. It's something that we are identifying as something that the group would want to look into.
You know, that $500 fee they charge for well drilling now, and then we keep a piece of it, and Ecology keeps a piece of it, I think. Is that dedicated, or is that referred to? How's that supposedly going to be utilized?
So currently, $350 that fee goes to Ecology. And it is identified as for their use in the watershed.
So they might fund it with that money?
Potentially. I do have an, I would like to talk more about for funding options as well today, but if not, at another briefing.
Okay. I guess I'd like to hear more about that at some point. No hurry.
More chatter about funding later. Who would be the lead agency?
Most likely DIRT.
DIRT?
D-E-R-T.
And have we reached out to the local governments and tribe to see if they're on board? Or is it still too embryonic?
It's very early stages. Having it as a recommendation in the plan will generally, the members of the planning unit are interested in considering its development. So, not committing, but the beginning process of it. So if there aren't any concerns at this point, I think we can move on to the next one, if everybody's okay with that?
Yep, let's move on to the next one.
So, some of the items are recommendations for the Department of Ecology to implement through state law. So if these types of items are included in the plan, it will be that the planning unit for the Deschutes Watershed recommends Ecology implement these. This doesn't require them to change or implement anything, but if they choose to do so, there could definitely be impacts to Thurston County residents. Also note that if Ecology went through the process, it could initiate a state, or would initiate a state program period. So this specific proposal expands on making law for the issuance of emergency order, with very little proposed change to the language. The current language says that the Department of Ecology may curtail withdrawals of groundwater from permanent exempt wells with an emergency drought order, the limitation being no more than 350 gallons per day for indoor use. The recommended change to the language would be to say that the Department of Ecology will curtail withdrawal of groundwater from permanent exempt wells with an emergency drought order. So going from may to will. This doesn't address how it would be implemented, enforced, or funded. It doesn't require that Ecology do anything, or that it starts this process. Some members side that it would be preferred that this be a statewide recommendation instead of just the Deschutes Watershed, understanding the facts that could be just two hours' distance if it's only for the Deschutes Watershed.
You want feedback?
Yes.
Well, number one, you answered my question as if this was going to be a statewide proposal. And you talked about funding and enforcement. And is the impetus of this water rights and the Hearst decision, or what is the impetus?
This is not a requirement in any way. It is a request from the Squawson Tribe as a member of the Planning Deschutes to include this as a way...
Sounds terrible.
Yeah, that's breaking up. I can't make it out.
You're breaking up terribly, and it's hard to get the concept of the sentence.
I'm finding that's the same on, as listening to the commissioners. This is a very broken up Zoom, I'm afraid.
Boy, now I can hear you just fine.
Yeah. Oh, well, maybe my connection's a little better. I think what Kate was saying is that this is a special, this is a request to include these drought response limits as a recommendation in the plan from the Squawson Island Tribe, who is a member of the planning unit.
Yes. Can you give that right now?
Yep.
Okay. I agree with Jennifer, though. You were breaking up a little bit on my end, too. But, yes, not a requirement. This is a request from the Squawson Island Tribe to help improve our stream flow, just as another step added to the process.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you're looking for thumbs up on this concept, or?
Yeah. They are, members of the planning unit are looking for input on whether or not this is a concept that we might be, that you might be able to support, that you would not be able to approve the plan if it's included, just a temperature read, how...
Question.
In fact, yes.
When we talk about, under the action there, limit water withdrawal during droughts, are there, are you talking about water withdrawal from wells within the watershed? Or are you talking about somebody that has a water right and drawing water right out of the river? What's the deal there?
It would be for exempt well owners within the watershed, which occasionally also includes surface water, right? Nothing that would be a permitted one. That would still be excluded from this.
So you could have a permitted water right, but you could not take water out of your well, more than 350 gallons, I guess, is what you're saying? Is that what I'm hearing? You can draw water out of the river with a water right, but you can't take it out of a well that's in the drainage?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, yes, that is right. So, the way that it works right now, if there's a drought, there's nothing restricting who removes water, who removes groundwater. If you have people that have permit exempt wells, and you have people that have water rights, that they had to purchase a water right and own that connection, if well holders can continue to withdraw as much water as they need, and that could, in effect, that could reduce the water that the right holders own. So the intent is to protect senior water right holders from having a withdrawal when the water level is too low for all of them.
So this limits some folks, but it does not limit the tribe?
The tribe has a water right, so this would only affect permit exempt wells.
Okay.
I can't, I don't think that's going to be very fair. I can see a lot of resistance coming from that.
Yeah. Do you have any questions, Ramiro, about this piece?
Well, I'm just curious, because I think you answered the question. This is somewhat outside of the Hearst decision, because the Hearst decision gives some parameters, I believe, but the legislature, they put some limits as to how much water each watershed can extract. What I believe this is an additional restriction on how much water anybody, an exempt well, can utilize during drought conditions.
Right. And that's what most of these policies are going to be. They're all outside of that limit Hearst decision. They're recommendations as requests.
So, and I don't know, you know, sometimes we use the word drought, you know, and depending on the region, there's different meaning, right? Who determines what drought is under this particular proposal?
So it's an official drought emergency declaration. I'm not remembering right now if Ecology, Department of Ecology, issues that, or if it is governed by state governor. But one of those two.
Okay.
I have questions about going beyond Hearst this early in the game, until we get everything figured out.
I want to ask you, Thomasina, if you have questions regarding the previous slide on the Deschutes Watershed Council and/or this one, your commissioner may have been in sync with him. If you have any questions you'd like to ask, please ask. Raise your hand so I can see you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Yeah, this brings up a lot of questions and philosophical...
Yeah. A fairness thing is going to be the problem.
So going back to your statement, Caitlin, whether it's measuring the temperature of the board, at least two board members are not that very warm about this idea.
Good chill.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I would like, because I know one of the things that's being talked about is putting meters on wells and charging for water and all that, you know, somewhere down the road. I would hate to get ahead of that as a proposal from the state. I can just see a lot of potential concern. I mean, just put it that way for right now.
Okay. I will take those concerns back to the Deschutes Planning Unit and potentially have more information for you on it at a further briefing.
Just a follow-up question. Don't all the new wells that are going to be allowed in that watershed, aren't they, like, restricted quite a bit under Hearst and the decisions made sometime back? I don't know. Like, it used to be like a 5,000 gallon exempt well or something. Well, I don't know anybody that would use 5,000 gallons, but kind of the average is 350 or something. And that's kind of where this came from, maybe. But aren't there restrictions on the new wells somehow?
Yes. The restrictions for this watershed are 950 gallons per day. But in all honesty, we don't have information on whether or not that is negatively impacting people. We also don't have monitoring on wells, so we don't know how much water they're using. And we don't have enforcement on anybody that goes over that, or know if they are going over that. So, and that's another, that's another item that I feel like we'll probably breeze by quick, if we get to it today as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, that seems to be more being looked at as a legislative issue from the state legislature, it seems like. I mean, people are already recognizing they're restricted. I don't know, I don't know how that applies to fairness. I guess I have concerns. I guess I'll just let it go with concerns.
Okay. So, a flow rule, as a reminder, is the amount of water that must be measured within the streams as identified by state law. So when the stream levels dip below that level, water rights will no longer be issued for it. We then refer to that stream as closed. This doesn't prevent permit exempt wells from continuing to be drilled in those areas. Only new permit required water rights. So in all honesty, it doesn't have a very large effect on most individual homeowners in Thurston County. This is a proposal to recommend that Ecology review the rules in this basin, consider updating the technology used to determine the limits, and take a closer look at the stream and the tributaries that have salmon and salmon habitat, to determine whether or not there is a need to close certain areas to water rights to help protect those really important streams and tributaries. Again, this is a recommendation for Ecology to implement, fund, and enforce, but they would need to decide if they were going to go through that process.
Boy. I can see a lot of people jumping up and down already.
Kate, is this also a recommendation from the tribe, or was this from other members of the planning unit?
This is also from the tribe.
Oh, it is. It says Ecology requests, okay.
Oh, no. It would be a request to Ecology to implement.
On behalf of the tribe, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure about that one.
Bob, when you were talking about this, did we talk about native runs versus plant runs, or anything like that, when it comes to fish?
No, that hasn't been identified. But if that's something that would interest you, that could be a suggestion.
Well, I just asked about it because the Deschutes didn't have a native run. That's why I asked that question. It's got a potential for a run if Washington Fish and Wildlife folks let, I guess, planted fish go up the river. Somehow, they've been stopping them lately. I don't think they've had a run for a few years. I'm just wondering how that connects in. They talked about a fish hatchery down around Tumwater that we had offered to be in partnership with. I don't know where that's at. Seems like there's, seems like there's things in here that aren't completely covered, I guess. You know, even things like, the recharge isn't taken into consideration, because I know on that 300 gallon business a day, 90% of it, as long as you're not on a sewage system, goes back into the recharge. That's part of the equation that Kevin Hanson talks about. I think there's even things about, if you cut a tree down, it saves 250 gallons a day, or something. So are we using all the information as we come up with these potential recommendations, I guess? So I can see a lot of discussion left to be had there.
Caitlin, the purpose is very altruistic. I love that. I mean, who doesn't want to protect aquatic resources, stream flows, and water rights? But my question is, when the action is limited to only streams with salmon habitat, what's the percentage of all of our streams does that take in? Do we know?
I don't know. Talking to the tribe, it sounds like it's not much. It seems to be more like a cleaning up the law sort of thing.
Okay. That'd be something I'd like to hear. Any questions, Ramiro? Anything, Thomasina? Nope, okay.
So I'm hearing, bringing back a little more data on how this would impact what streams and how many, and what the level of impact would be on this one, as well as expressing some concerns initially from the board when Kate goes back to the group.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Yeah. This is the one that I don't think we need to talk too much about. This is lowering PE well withdrawal limits from 950 gallons per day to 500 gallons per day. There are comments suggesting that this might be too broad of a limitation to implement without a watershed-specific analysis. The other thing to keep in mind with these is that there haven't been any disagreements from many members of the planning unit, including the cities and Olympia Master Builders on some of these items. So it might, we might be the only dissenting opinion. But this was a little bit of an arbitrary suggestion, just based on wanting to improve stream flow by the tribe again.
I do think, though, that, yes, individual groups or municipalities, I could see why maybe they wouldn't care. But I think if you had a public hearing, and you were going to talk about these issues, I think you're going to get some pretty good participation.
Oh, we would violate the social distancing.
Yeah, well, I'm sure.
With the exception of, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Go ahead.
With the exception, Caitlin, of the Deschutes Watershed Council, are all of these requests of Ecology from Squawson Tribe?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think I can sort of lump this in with the other proposals with similar concerns from you, so that we can move on to the last one?
That's fair, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's talk about funding.
Go like this.
Well, I just, I mean, I do think at some point we need to allow the public to have input on this somewhere along the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this item goes back to the implementation of the plan and how the watershed can continue to improve stream flow, partially in conjunction with the proposed Deschutes Watershed Council. When someone applies for a building permit, Thurston County has a $500 well fee. The county is required to take in from the Hearst fix. The proposal here is to increase the well fee from $500 to $1,500, since that fee is required in state law, like most of the other proposals we've gone over. This is a recommendation for Ecology to change this fee. As drafted currently, that would allow for $250 to be kept by the county in order to aid in projects, as well as tracking, and the rest of it to be distributed between the Deschutes Watershed Council and Ecology, with maybe a few specific items that the group wants to have covered. This is based on a rough calculation done by the Squawson Island Tribe to determine how much funding is needed in order to implement the plan based on the average amount collected from the $500 fee from 2018 and 2019 that Thurston County has collected. And Kevin Hanson did a similar calculation that honestly was much higher than Squawson's. So I don't think it's unreasonable, the amount that they came up with, but it's the method that we're discussing. So, one suggestion for the proposal to make it more equitable could be including a stepped fee, where applicants are charged based on the amount of square footage that is applied for in a building permit. But this method was proposed by Squawson because it shows a commitment to funding before members vote on the approval of the plan. And they have some serious concerns with how much effort will be put into implementation by the county, which is also why some of the other items have been recommended by them is because it will determine whether or not they vote to approve the plan. Another consideration in the proposal is input from Olympia Master Builders. They don't have an issue with determining funding for the plan in general, but do have some concerns with the amount of weight being put into the well fee. They ask to consider more broad-based funding models, like a watershed-wide levy, to make it more equitable and prevent the plan from relying just on economic conditions. So what are your... Um, so what are your general thoughts on funding?
I, I don't think it's very warm.
Yeah, no, no.
I think you're looking, are you trying to create some animosity amongst the public? Is that what you're doing?
I'm surprised with, uh, I'm somewhat surprised with the O M B
Yeah.
proposal, uh, but it's, it's, it seems applicable to spread it out over the whole, uh, uh, watershed. But it, for me, it just takes quite a bit more study and more information.
And justification, I guess.
Yeah, and of course, public input.
Lots of public input.
How does that work, Kate, with these plans? What's the, um, is there public input? Where, where does that appear in the process of adoption of these plans?
There is, uh, there is not public input, um, other than the SEPA. Um, but that's, that's also, you know, these recommendations to Ecology to change state law are the only items that we would need to, uh, determine before the approval of the plan. All the other aspects are, uh, things that we can do in the future with the public process after the adoption of the plan. Um, the problem is just whether or not other members will vote to approve the plan in order to get to that point if we don't have them in it. So it's a little bit of a balance here.
Wow. Okay. Great throw of luck on your parade. But yeah, the, conceptually, it sounds nice, but practically, uh, it's gonna be a big uphill. Perhaps I might be wrong.
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? You broke up a little bit.
I forgot what I said now. Definitely I like it, but it's an uphill battle, uh, in my opinion. And I could be wrong, but I think it's gonna be an uphill battle, especially with the public and the people affected by it. Thomasina, can you think of any questions that, uh, Commissioner Mensah might have?
Excuse me. Uh, no, I do believe that Commissioner Mensah met with Caitlin prior to this briefing, so he has received the information direct from the source, and I'm sure he will follow up with any questions that he might have to her.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, of course.
I want to remind us all that Caitlin is the messenger. That is, it is her, it is her task to bring back to you, just like she's doing today, all sorts of ideas coming out of the Planning Unit, uh, controversial or not, and, uh,
Great clarification, yeah. Don't shoot the messenger.
You're very brave to do this, Kate. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions or comments?
Just real quick, uh, would, Jen, maybe Jennifer would know this. Would this, uh, would something like this go in front of the Planning Commission, uh, rather than front of, in front of us to start with?
I don't believe so. I don't, I'm trying to, I don't think our codes would require something like this to go before the Planning Commission. It's not directly connected.
Any kind of public input to move forward on something like this? I mean, that, it just surprises me that, uh, you know, we always, uh, kind of pride ourselves in involving the public and, and not having the public involved actually surprises me that we would try to do something like that, so.
Yeah, and, and Kate, maybe that's a concern to bring back to the group and talk about that, especially with the other jurisdictions as well.
Yeah.
Um, as about the concern about, do, you know, putting recommendations like this into the plan that would have direct impact on citizens really begs for a public process, and maybe that could be a point of conversation, especially with the government members on the Planning Unit. It makes sense to me to sort of broach that and, and see what people think and have a conversation, and then bring it back in the next briefing to this board for a follow-up, along with all the other information they've asked for today. Um, I mean, clearly, today was about introducing some concepts to you and raising some flags for you to be aware that these recommendations had been put forth by the tribe as part of this process, but there's definitely more work to do, and, uh, I think we got a good temperature read today on some of these issues and can do some more work and then bring back, um, the report back at a future briefing.
And, and I guess, uh, I don't know who's keeping minutes on it all or not, because, uh, isn't one of the requirements that all the members participating have to agree or else Ecology steps in? So there's, it almost looks like it's put together, uh, for the purpose of somebody not agreeing, and then it goes somewhere else. But is that the way it works?
There has to be a consensus agreement, yes.
Yeah, so.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, the next step for you, Caitlin, do you have to go back and deliver the, the, this news?
Uh, yes, and, uh, and potentially work out, uh, what kind of an agreement we could come to that would have less of a serious impact that I could bring back to you. Uh, maybe something that we could put as conceptual items to look into after plan adoption, uh, but we'll have to see.
But I, I don't, personally, I mean, I, I could see how this would tie the commission up for a long period of time. I don't understand why not go through the Planning Commission myself, because that's a pretty good public process that we have in place, uh, to do something like that, so. Just.
Okay.
Well, this is also on a very tight deadline, unfortunately, so we, we did discuss whether or not there would be a public process, and it was decided at the beginning we wouldn't be able to. So if we can't have a public process, then we can't have these items, and I just have to bring that back to them.
I, I guess, uh, I don't know what other jurisdictions are doing around the state for their, uh, piece of it, but I can't imagine they're giving in to just about anything, just so somebody will agree. I mean, there's gonna be disagreements all the way through, I believe. Anyway, are we done? Is that it?
Thank you, and we look forward to, uh, next time.
Thank you. More to come.
Yeah, thank you, Kate. Bye-bye. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks.